Okay. Want to report of the offices? Mayor's report. Anyway, um, we're getting, uh, I'm asking for volunteers to help in our cleanup day this year, August twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, April twenty-eighth, starting at eight o'clock in the morning here at Sauk Indian, it'll be in the senior center. So if you can block that date out to come out and help us do a village-wide cleanup, I really would appreciate that. If you can tell anyone, it'll be on the website, email blast, and then everything that we can post to let everyone know. I will get the particulars when I talk to a couple of the department heads to find out how we're going to, uh, collect, do the collection of the, um, the waste. But I'm looking and I'm asking for anyone to come out and give us a hand in the areas that we don't get a chance to do, uh, that we need to clean up in our, in our village to make it look much, much better. That's all I have for a report. Report from the village clerk, Mr. Malva Campbell Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to keep us long because we have such an ambitious agenda. So for that reason, I will not give a FOIA request, I mean, FOIA report, even though we know that it has been updated and the updates are on the board outside. But at our next meeting, I'll talk about FOIAs. I met with Cook County Clerk's Office today and the voting machine has been placed at the Peso Center and I signed off on them. The village stickers, um, the contest ended on Friday and those who are judging must turn all of their documents in tomorrow. So we will have a village sticker coming up here soon. Animal tags were ordered and I posted on eBlast the fact that they are being ordered and that we will be looking forward to residents purchasing animal tags to a greater extent than they did last year and that it will be governed a great, to a greater extent. Student government stay is still being planned for April twenty-four, I believe it is, and we're moving forward with that. The schools received their, the theme, uh, the rubics and everything for them to write for your essays today. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, Mayor. Village is applying for a community development block grant or CDBD for roadway improvements. The ordinance on the agenda for board approval tonight involves the reconstruction, reconstruction of two-hundred-twenty-first Street from Sauk Trail to Orianna Avenue, as well as Paxton Avenue, Shirley Avenue, and two-hundred-and-twenty-second Place. This is about one mile of roadway to be reconstructed. We are applying for four-hundred-thousand dollars in funding for this project and would also utilize MRT funding for the remaining project expenses. The CDBD application is due to Cook County on March twenty-third. You should be notified if our application is approved a few months following the due date. And that's everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Reports from departments, finance, and administration. Mr. Mohan Raab.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board. Um, the finance department recently updated and uploaded the financial report because the debt I provided in the North County office, once again, I have to release them either tomorrow or in a month. The financials to February, February eighteen, will be very soon. And yesterday, the records come, I think, was submitted by a third-party auditor. And we will know whether we may have to pay extra premiums to the church when we get our activity done more. If not, we know that we're used to the end, everyone gets to be in that position.
Thank you, sir. Fire department, Chief Alstovrak.
Thank you, Mayor, and board. From February twenty-fourth through March the eighth, the fire department responded to twenty-three calls. We had three fire alarms, six vehicle accidents, two metro aides out of town, six ambulance PD assist, one CO alarm, two gas leaks, two structure fires, and one brush fire. And that is my report for the fire.
Thank you. Public works, Mr. Director Kevin Welley.
You have a police report.
Oh, okay. We should have waited up. Okay. We have a police report going to be read by our fire chief.
All right, Mayor, and board. Uh, from February twenty-seven through March the thirteenth, the police department received four-hundred-and-fifty-six calls. The rest summary from February twenty-seven through March thirteenth was a total of eleven. Case of interest, on March the tenth, officers were called to Canalite Village for a situation where offender forced his way into a resident and was armed with a weapon. Upon arrival of the police, the officers tried to call the offender out from the residents who failed to respond. The Cook County Sheriff's Department, as well as South Bergen Emergency Response and SERC, were called to assist. Once at the scene, SERC deployed their robot, which located the offender and appeared to cease. The Cook County coroner, as well as the Illinois State Police Crime Scene Investigation Unit, was called in to assist with the investigation. The Cook County coroner conducted an autopsy and determined the offender died of a single shot to the head. Cause of death was suicide. An update on the narcon. On February twenty-sixth, I attended a brush conference, reported the successful lifesaving efforts by suburban police departments to reverse an overdose through the partition in the Enzo Auto Ejector Pet Grant Program. Cook County Commissioner John Horace dispirited the program and our department has been accepted to receive updated devices free of charge. Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Sauk Village Police Department has been invited to join the task force, which is sponsored by a Cook County State's Attorney, who is a recipient of the United States Department of Justice Office of Juvenile Justice and Linky See Program Grant to enforce laws regarding internet crimes against children and educate the community. Our department entered into an understanding, joining the task force, which will provide us with grant resources, joint operations help along with the training and equipment opportunities. As reported, a national night out, we are registered with the National Association of Top Watch for the twenty-eighteen national night out set for August the seventh. If you would like to volunteer, volunteer, or if you have any suggestions, feel free to email me at SaukVillage@gmail.com or message, message me on Facebook, or you can call me directly. Seven oh eight, seven five three, five one five. Prescription drug drop-off. Just a reminder, quarterly DEA prescription drug drop-off will be held on April the twenty-eighth, between eight AM and three PM in the lobby of the Sauk Village Police Department. We are asking that any owner who would like to dispose of the rotten prescription drugs, feel free to use this opportunity to discuss. And that is our report.
Thank you, Chief. Public works director, Mr. Kevin Welley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, our next ongoing war project is on three fourteen, this is twenty-sixty-six to seventeenth place. We have a leak on the house service line. On the north side of town, when we dig one house service line, we end up having to repair the one next to it also. Uh, the saddles on the back of the, the services rot away and if we disper, we dispose, we remove one, it causes problems with the other ones and we end up having to do them. But that's our next project. Um, also, we have an ongoing project, um, which will take at least a month to finish, but our next up and coming will be on two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street in Cornell. This is an ongoing project attached with the, the road work, the road project that will be coming up in the spring here and in the summertime. Um, we have a main to replace across Cornell and two-hundred-and-twenty-third with another valve on the other side. And this will also include two other repairs further on down the road so that we don't have to dig these areas anymore in the future, once the road has been repaired. Staff has also dumped, um, we, we, we got a call from a, a community next door to us, they were looking for some clean fill. It just so happened during the winter time that we have a lot of dig operations and driveways or street work and the material we take out, we have to replace with stone for backfill. So this is what we call our spoils material. But they had an issue with one of their lakes, um, the bank was failing in it, so they were asking for towns around that had any fill to get rid of. And we always have fill every year that we have to dispose of, but we have to pay for deep disposal. So we took roughly about three hundred-plus yards of, of our spoils over there for free to dispose of it. All we had to do was take at least, uh, half of it over with our trucks and then once they got their truck free, they picked up the rest. So that, all that was taken care of and we did help out the community. There's a cost savings to all of that. Um, we still have trucks that are, are auto-service right now. The one truck we had with the gas tank and the plow, that one's in the shopping repaired right now. It has weldwork that has to be done and a key switch replacement. Once that truck has been brought back to us, we have another truck, an older truck, that has a similar problem with some weldwork in the gas tank. Uh, both these trucks are twenty-eight years old, so there's some issues we're going to have with them. Um, we currently have our, one of our newer trucks too that has a hydraulic issue. We did fix one of the problems, but we still have to get a quote on flushing out the whole draw, hydraulic system because there's some debris in the lines, some lines broke down or something, so we have to have the whole system flushed. Um, staff is also currently working on, after we do a, a shut-off list for the community, we'll get a list back from the front desk that says there's either jet digs or can't find. We're currently working on those, something that is either a dig due to, uh, the box is shifted or the valve is broke. We're working on those at this time. Um, staff has also been out doing some patchwork, some havo patchwork. Residents have been calling and making complaints about some bigger holes in town. A couple of the industrial parks had some of those. We're addressing those first. Uh, they have started into the streets, uh, street by street, but they will continue day, every day that we can get out, uh, but street by street, doing all the patchwork we can do up until spring and then that'll be more permanent repairs. Also, staff had gotten a few calls, some of the digs we had earlier on in the season, um, the driveways that were dug out, when we put the material back, it was during the frost and the freeze time, so that material was kind of frozen as it thawed out and settling down. So we drove around to most of our locations that were digs and we had to, uh, put some more stone in some of the driveways for safety to the resident and some of them are sinking out once they thawed. All that has been taken care of. Um, and good note, we are starting our process for our ball field upgrade, uh, the baseball fields through a grant. Uh, we just got our final draft and our final, I guess, direction on the demo that Public Works is going to try to assist with. Uh, this is mainly just some real offensive concrete slabs, um, to try to have the cost savings. It looks like we're ready to go, so in the next month, we'll be tearing that material out, hopefully then moving on with the project. Um, second, the last, second to last item here is, uh, wellhouse repairs. Uh, last reporter reported we've had some issues in the wellhouse, it's nothing major, um, some broken fittings and pipes and some leaky, leaky items. Uh, one of our air strippers was down to do a broken, uh, plastic line. That line's been replaced, that stripper's back online. Um, our chlorine room, we had a heater go bad in there, which, uh, it overheated the chlorine head. The heater's been repaired, the chlorine head is sent off for repairs. And we had a few sump pumps during all this rain and this thaw that failed, so we had to replace that. All that is back in service. Uh, let's see here. Also, in the last two weeks, for some reason, uh, probably due to the thaw, but we have a lot of signs that have been displaced, pulled out of the ground, shoved, ran over. Uh, residents have been calling, letting us know we're hanging off into the streets. And on the north side, we've got about a half a dozen signs that were graffiti. We always ask residents, you see anybody mess with the signs, even kids just smacking on them or throwing anything at them, please call the police department. This is damaging to the signs and if they do remove a safety-sensitive sign like a stop sign, somebody could be killed in an intersection like that. And the last item is salt prices. Uh, we just received our renewal for our CMS pricing and they're giving us the second year renewal, so our prices will be the same as this year, which is pretty low. And I woke up the tonnage on that salt to four-hundred tons instead of three-hundred, but it will still under twenty-thousand dollars, it's pretty good savings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Our economic development director, uh, Joseph Whitelaw, oh, no, I'm sorry. Community Development Director, Sherry DeZiff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, nine corp, the nine corp call for three-seven of twenty-eighteen was a hundred-and-eighty-five on the fourth decade. Nineteen were found guilty, ten were found not guilty, five continuances were given for April fourth's call. Business license renewal letters have been completed and will be mailed out on March twentieth for the new license period. Also, the contractors' license renewals are completed and will be mailed out on April first for the new year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, economic development director, Mr. Joseph Whitelaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the board and police report that the investment Cook grant application will be completed this week and submitted to Cook County for consideration. Cook County announced a second round of investment Cook grants in an eight-point-five-million-dollar program to cover the costs of planning and feasibility studies, right-of-way acquisition, construction associated with transportation improvements, and sponsored, uh, sponsored by local government and fire department. We are submitting a grant for engineering, for roadways, rail spur expansion within the logistics center. Uh, the board trustees had before tonight a resolution, uh, supporting and directing the submission of the grant. Uh, our application is for four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or more from Cook County. This is a competitive grant, we're very hopeful that we will be successful in our application. I want to thank Jim Zarnik for his technical assistance in this process. Last year, Sauk Village ear funds for the investment Cook grant, um, for the village match for a federal grant that we received for improvements that will be done later this summer on two-hundred-and-twenty-third Street at Cornell. Sauk Village was among thirty communities to receive the funds. The Chicago Metro Problem Agency for Planning and CMAP Board will be approving the contract for the consultant who will be heading up the village's comprehensive plan. I have put information relative to the selection, recommendation, consultant, and your package. A formal kickoff meeting will be scheduled with the consultant once the contract is executed. We've been working collaboratively, uh, coming up with realistic revenue projections for the property taxes, revenues for each district, and business license revenues in preparation as the initial budget process moves forward. Uh, we've been working closely with the village treasurer on these and will be working to refine these numbers over the course of the next couple of weeks. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
Got questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm aware that we're supposed to approve the orders for this particular piece of, uh, item on, uh, to submit an application. However, uh, when I was doing research, I found that, uh, phase one of the project that, uh, the economic development, uh, director is asking for this application was approved and was awarded back in, uh, I want to say twenty-fourteen. Uh, phase one was awarded a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Phase two was awarded one-fifty-six, five-sixty-eight, twenty. Now, my question is to the economic director, what's the difference between what we, they already have phase one and two? And, and, and this is a final report of improvement, so that money has already been paid out and given for phase one, phase two, the logistics center. And my question is to you, why are we continually trying to improve the logistics center when they just talked about a ten-million-dollar expansion? And they have already been approved and awarded money for phase one and two?
I'm not familiar with the number you just recited. Um...
Well, I can give you a copy when I have, and, and these are final payments and they have been awarded money for phase one and two.
Okay.
Already, so...
Again, I'm not sure what, what number you're referring to. Um, the, the amount that we've had commitments from Cook County with respect to the geotechnical, which is soil boarding, and for the phase one study, um, were significantly less than what you're talking about. So if, if those numbers you're referring to are with respect to a grant for windpack wave expansion, then that's a totally separate thing. I, I, I don't know where those numbers came from.
Okay. In addition to, um, uh, uh, other information I found is that I requested a copy of the forty-two thousand, five-hundred dollars that you said that, um, Cook County is going to let us know this, the, uh, because we get this money and...
Wait, did the trustee fit for the record? Yeah, I can respond to that.
No, I finished my question, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I just want a copy of the letter, okay? And I want you, uh, somebody to explain to me why we're pursuing this grant when, uh, the logistics center and it, and it just went back in this particular project by Baxter and Woodman has been already awarded money for phase one and two. So, I just want to know what's going on here.
Okay. Sorry. Again, trustee, I apologize for interrupting. Um, with respect to your request for the information, I provided you and the board with a copy of, uh, the response to that, um, since this is a competitive grant, that information, uh, is not going to be released at this time until after the grant has been awarded. At that time, I'm going to have to provide you with the letter that was provided, uh, from Cook County. Since this is a grant application, um, those kind of things are very sensitive since these are, uh, competitive. Um, and with respect to Baxter and Woodman, Baxter and Woodman has nothing to do with the, uh, amounts that we slot through, uh, Cook County for what, um, I'm referring to. If you have something else that has nothing to do with what we're doing here today.
I, I'm asking you a difference. It's the same area, phase one and phase two, so, okay, that's fine.
That might be a different project, but it has nothing to do with the investment Cook grant.
Reports of trustees and standing committees. Public Service Committee, uh, trustee Bernice Brewer.
No, no report.
Budget and finance committee, trustee Roger Graham.
Uh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to say that next Wednesday, I have a meeting at seven PM here in the Rotunda. Uh, next Wednesday at seven PM. That's all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation and Youth Services, trustee Calvin Jones.
The thirty is, uh, it's this Friday, uh, that will be the day of stuffing of the eggs and decorating the Easter baskets from the community center. Thirty-first is Easter egg hunt, and as our sharp had known, um, there will be flyers coming out shortly for that and, um, we also got what I was announced last week about the basketball program, new basketball program, which is the AAU basketball tryouts, um, starting Thursday, they will be held at the, uh, community center. And the calendar and times, uh, well, Thursday will be starting at four PM and a calendar coming out shortly with the rest of the things. And, uh, the, the original basketball program that's still going on from three to six, that's Monday and Friday. Wednesdays have been, um, canceled due to the volunteers' work schedule. So, um, if anyone wants to volunteer... Okay. Um, you're more than welcome. We always looking for volunteers in, um, for Parks and Recreation. That's it.
I don't think you might want to. I don't think you have to.
He's looking for volunteers to help him with the basketball, upcoming basketball program. Any events, any events for, uh, Parks and Recs, um, you're more than welcome to help out. Uh, starting at ten, for the, uh, the stuff that have the Easter eggs and that goes until all the eggs and stuff. That concludes my report. Thank you. Housing and Government Relations Committee, trustee Cecil Tate. Okay. Uh, Orders Review Committee, trustee Linda Todd.
The Ordnance Review Committee is going to meet this Thursday, March fifteenth, six-thirty, here in the Rotunda. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Beth Zuppan.
Our committee met last week. We were a small group, so we didn't get much accomplished, unfortunately. Um, but again, just like everybody else is talking up here, we are always happy to have volunteers participate in our committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions. Beautification Committee Chairman, trustee Linda Todd.
No report.
Thank you. Senior Advisory Council Chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Uh, the Senior Advisory Council Committee, they, uh, we met last Thursday. Uh, SEDA is, uh, back and will be at the senior center for a few days in March, they will be here Monday, two days in April, and two days in May. And, uh, of course, please see our senior center calendar for the dates and times. Our once-in-one informational Tuesday for our seniors started today with a luncheon and bingo also included. And Dr. Stan's, uh, Stan Perry was our, uh, speaker today. Also, our once-in-one health fair starts this Thursday from one to three, uh, at the senior center. There's some flyers, uh, on the table right there, so if you all kindly pass the word and grab some of those flyers for us, we appreciate it. Also, Leisure Tyrants Club has started back up on every other Wednesday. We have two new organizations. Uh, the Queen Esther Grand Chapter of the Eastern Stars will be meeting once a court and also Walgreens will be having their, uh, board meetings once a court in the senior center. Also, Vehicles will continue every first and third of Fridays, but with new times from five PM to nine PM. Uh, Bluegrass, second and fourth Sundays from six to ten. Sauk Village for Information and Dialogue, uh, every second Monday at one. Surroundments, that is Wednesday morning from eight AM to twelve. And of course, there's more to come. And again, we're going to check our calendar for what's posted on windows and, uh, the doors and, uh, boards in the senior center. And also remember that the senior center is now available for rentals and we would like to get the word out, so if you all can kind of pass the word on there. Uh, thanks and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Got a question?
Yes.
I understand Walgreens is going to have quarterly meetings here. Are we okay with that, partly? Seems kind of odd to me that we can allow little businesses to use our facilities versus their own. And are we setting a precedent with them that we now have to make ourselves available to all the other village businesses if they want to do something similar? Just put the question out there.
You can ask.
Uh, well, Walgreens, uh, are participating in our health fairs, uh, once in a while and they did actually, actually asked to use, I think, this area or this side and it was suggested that, you know, some of you in the state, uh, asked to use the senior center. And we voted on it and agreed that, you know, they're able, because they are going to, just like, uh, other organizations, uh, Eastern Star, uh, they have, uh, agreed to sponsor like, you know, like our informational Tuesday, our lunches, and anything that we need, you know, they have, you know, access whatever we need, they're willing to sponsor. So we're kind of just letting other organizations kind of coming up with, or use the senior center and kind of sponsor the things that, that we do, that we're doing.
You have a question? Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Uh, new business. I accept the motion to approve the accounts payable on the spreadsheet that are dated from March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So...
The move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zuppan. Any questions?
Question. Mr. Mayor, on page one of the accounts payable, we have on here the owner's group and has various HR duties. Uh, then you have HR consultant and, uh, one check is for like four thousand, one-hundred-seventy-six dollars and the other is for five thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. And, uh, first of all, I asked Mohan to copy these invoices, but the poor senior wasn't able to give them to me. And I'd like to know, uh, who's performing these HR duties and what can they possibly be doing for four thousand, five thousand dollars? Secondly, on that particular page, uh, we also have Dr. Strata here again and her... and her contract was never brought before the board again, and she's down here with professional service and I guess this is a union contract. So she's not specifying in her invoices, as I told, she's not itemizing how much time she's spending on H.R. and then how much time she's spending on the union. And if I'm not mistaken, she has three checks on here for $1,200 and so dollars, and that's 45 hours per check that she spends on the union contract. So I ask that this be removed again because we're not sure of what, who's doing the H.R. services, and Dr. Stroud is not a South Village employee, as you always state to us. So I'd like to know why the Owens Group is not paying her. It seems like it's double dipping to me. And that's my first concern. The second one is that the people from Rose Pass Control, I told they were here, and they didn't want to spray the Senior Center again because they haven't been paid, but I see they're on here, they're being paid right now. And on page, on page five, we have $6,710 for review. I guess this is the audit report that we never got a copy of, and it was never brought before the board. So again, I'd like that item removed because we never voted on it, and we never proved the payment for this particular grant. Also want to note, just note that Buzz Ampliak Services on page six hasn't been paid in three months. I don't understand why we're behind three months in that. And also on the last page, page 10, it also shows on here that Baxter and Woodman was paid $2,192 for the Logistics Center resurfacing. I'd like to know what project that was, since I couldn't get a copy of the invoice from Mohan. And is this part of phase one and two? And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Slatter came here earlier part of the, when we first started, and he emphasized this is part of phase two on this project, the Logistics Center resurfacing. So I'm sort of confused with what Joe's, what economic development person is trying to submit an application for, when we have already submitted an application, they're being paid for this, and we are continually trying to prop up WIMPAC, when you have a whole village that hasn't been getting any grants at all. So I'm saying that if you spend much time and money on getting WIMPAC, who's just had a $10 billion expansion, then we should have time enough to find some money for the village. And that's my question is on that, my concern.
Hey, in answer to your question, yesterday you were here at the village for a while, and I saw you going to Mohan's office. And you, I'm sure, asked him questions, and you didn't get answers. And you're bringing it now. Is it Grant's thing or what? Because he was there today, you were here at the village hall, most of the day when I was here, and Mohan was here. So for me to try to answer those questions now, I don't know what you're doing, trying to see what I'm going to say and what he said, I don't know. But I'm sure he was able to give you answers on all the questions that you asked. So basically, what you're asking to do is to have those items removed from being paid. If there's anyone that wants to make a motion to do that, I'm here to accept that motion for that, for that reason, if you want those different items to be removed and not be, and those bills not be paid. But in answer to the question that you asked about the daily and how we haven't been paying them, as you know, we've been trying to get money from everywhere to just pay payroll. So yes, they are behind, but yes, we are doing our best to make sure that they catch up. So you already know that because you're here, well, you have to report me to find out, and you're here in the village every other day to come and ask questions. So that's why I want to understand why you're asking this question now after the fact, and you had time to, you got this, and you had time to ask Mr. Mohan money to do this. So if there's anybody that would like to, second, if you want to make a.
I have to make a comment, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, trustee, trustee.
This is a public meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not through.
Okay.
We're on the part now where it says motion. So if anybody would like to redact their motion and make a motion to remove these items from the accounts payable, they can do so now. If not, we will go through with the motion that's on the.
Mr. Mayor, I should be able to talk twice on any subject.
I didn't ask you to talk twice.
Talk once.
We're on the motion.
And you're not, and you're not, this is a public meeting, and I should be able to say my comment.
Trustee, trustee, I respected everything you said.
I respect everything you said.
Where you're not listening.
You're not listening to what I'm saying.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. I have a question. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, you can.
When it comes to the accounts payable, the issue with the John Kasperich, I would like to see that removed because we did not vote on it as a board. It was never brought before us. So that I'd like to see removed. The other, I think, when it comes to the Owens Group, we have an H.R. person, but we're paying them for H.R. consulting, and I think that's where the confusion is. Why are we paying them for consulting? What we have an H.R. person?
Well, here's what, and I've said this, I don't know how many times I have to go over this H.R. consulting, union negotiation. She's doing both jobs. I don't care. It's not double dipping. The person is qualified to do many more jobs. We just got her chief right. To do H.R. work for us and also to do the negotiation work for us, that's what that is. There's one person who's doing that. I'm sure that everyone here understands that sometimes a person can do more than walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. So we're paying this person, which is going to save us, and just the negotiations alone will save us $82 an hour, just for that alone. And right now, we're going through a negotiation that's going to take us a long while with the union for digging our police department. That's going to take a long while because they're going back and forth, back and forth. As you know, if you come up here, comes up into the village, they hear, they hear the spitting, back and forth, giving us whatever they want to have us in this negotiation. As you know, takes a while to do that. And you, trustee, that was here two years ago when we had the other negotiations, understand that this is not a cut and dry process. That's why I had and asked that person to do that. Now, if you want to take off, as I stated, if you want to take something off of the accounts payable, then it has to be a motion to be made in a second. But in the meantime, there's a motion on the floor, so I asked again. The people that made the motion, would they redact their motion and then allow this motion to be made to take off the payment for John Kasperich Associates?
I just want to clarify what I was asking. I'm not questioning Dr. Stroud and what we see here. What I'm questioning is the Owens Group. Is she filing under the Owens Group or under her name?
She's under both. She works for the Owens Group, which was, which is part of the Owens Group, is part of the H.R. consulting, and then also union, I'm sorry, not union, insurance. The Owens Group is our, is our, was, or is our insurance broker at the time. And then that service came along with that, with that particular item from the Owens Group. They, part of it is safety, which they have safety meetings every other month, and part of it is H.R., which I extended because they only give us so much hours for the money that we paid at the time.
That's what I was asking, not questioning Dr. Stroud, and I was not questioning. I was questioning that it's under Owens Group.
Yeah, that part is, yes. And then the other part is something that I did, because we do leave that instead of using the lawyers. I'm trying to save money. The lawyer's charge will be 175. This is 85.
No, and I understand that, but I was just questioning when it says Owens Group.
Yeah.
Because I know what they are, and when it goes under various H.R. duties, H.R. consulting, I know what the Owens does, but if she's filing it under the Owens Group, I understand. I understand Dr. Stroud and these charges here. I just wanted to clarify when it goes under the Owens Group.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm clarifying.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. It's seconded. There's nothing else, so madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Mayor votes yes. Motion is carried. Motion to accept the 2016-2017 audit report as presented by the Miller Cooper Con, uh, consultants. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam, please, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve the engagement of Kane McKenna Inc. as municipal advisory services for the tax anticipation warrants. This is what we brought up last week. I'll entertain a motion.
Question.
So moved. Hold on, hold on, hold on. She has a question. I know that's what I need, a motion. Oh, so moved, I'm sorry. I need a second, yes.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Grant. Question?
The question is, we're paying them $30,000 to get us a $550,000 loan?
Yes. Not a loan, it's a bond.
Well, to seek a bond for us.
Yes. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes. Motion is carried. Motion to approve the engagement of Bernard Securities as placement agent. This was all explained last week. We have to vote on that part of it, make them our placement agent.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Motion to approve the engagement of Ice Miller as bond and disclosure counsel. I'll make, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Grant, and second by trustee Zupan. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance abating the taxes for the general obligation bonds and TIF refunding bonds, series 2002A, and general obligation capital improvement bond series 2002B, abatement in the amount of $2,297,250.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance abating the tax for general obligation bond tax increment or TIF bond series 2008 in the abatement amount of $672,222.50.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Todd. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance abating tax, abating tax for general obligation bond tax increment series 2009, abatement amount of $493,290.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve an ordinance authorizing issuance not to exceed $550,000 general fund purposes tax anticipation warrant in the anticipation of the collection of taxes levy for the year 2017-18 and payable in the year 2018-19 by the village board of the villages of South Village, Cook, and Will County for the general fund purposes.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee Grant, and second by trustee Zupan. Any questions?
Comment.
Questions?
Questions, comments. Okay, Mr. Mayor, this $550,000 bond for general fund purposes, as I understand it, is that if we put this, if we get this bond, we're, I don't believe they let us know how much the interest rate was in there. And $550,000 is only going to get us through two or three K periods. We are taking out this bond, and once we get the tax levy, as I understand it, is that we're going to pay the bond off, and then we're going to be right back in the same situation we are in now instead of addressing the underlying problem. We can't keep, we just raised the taxes on homeowners here, 2.3 billion, we just raised a couple of fees. We can't keep borrowing money to fix this situation. We need to address the underlying problem. And to just to get this money, and the taxpayers are going to wind up paying for it because we never do what we say we're going to do when you borrow money. And I think it's a real disservice to the residents of South Village just to keep borrowing money, keep borrowing money, and we have, and committed our property taxes to stuff, to borrowing money, when we know we can't pay it back. It is, it's just, what's the phrase they use? Crazy.
If you, I don't know where you got that we were borrowing, which is a bond, that we were using this bond to pay payroll. I have not yet brought anything to the board, just letting them know what we were going to do with it, but I will tell you, there's one of them that's not payroll. And so I don't know where that came from, so who you found that, and you got that idea from. This board has not been even, we haven't even talked about that, because I was talking about something until I like get it. So I haven't even brought it to the board yet, what we're going to use it. I'm trying to gather information, so it can be used wisely, but one thing for sure would not be a payroll. The reason why we're in this position now is because we've been kicking this can down the same street for the last 20 years, and we got to pay now. We've been asking to the music. Got to pay the pipe, so we have an agent report that's over a million dollars that's been generated over the years. Soon or late, we got to pay that. Now or later, whatever, but at this particular time in my administration, I'm trying on trying to knock that down to at least half and not more. Those are the agent reports that it allows us to do business in the village. I didn't say anything about trying to pay payroll or raise taxes. Taxes are levied every year for different items. So it won't be for payroll. That you can assure, I can assure you of, it won't be for payroll. But to, but to say that it was for that, you could ask any trustee here. I haven't said anything to anybody about what the money is going to be useful because I haven't finished gathering information, what I'm going to use it for. I'm just trying to get it. At some point in time, this village is going to have to be able to borrow money to do anything or to go forth, or go forward with doing business in the village. We're not any different than any other village that has debt. But right now, we don't have, and we're not capable of borrowing, or diving on anything without paying something. Just like you would know if you have debt yourself, then you have to, sooner or later. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, one of the concerns that trustee Brewer had, and I'm gonna say this so the public hears it, it does say in the ordinance that in addition to this not exceeding five hundred fifty thousand dollars, these warrants, the interest rate is also not to exceed three and three quarters percent.
So it's in there?
Yes, on page three.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes. Motion is carried. Motion to approve resolution authorizing and directing of the submission of an application, application to the Cook County, I'm sorry, County of Cook, Illinois, representing funds with the Invest in Cook County grant funds.
So moved. Second.
Moved by trustee, uh, Zupan, second by trustee Todd. Any questions?
Comment. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I brought up this, uh, issue a little earlier this evening. Um, there's too many questionable things in the application that's gonna be submitted for the Invest in Cook County grant. Uh, uh, I asked for the copy of the forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. I don't understand why we can't get it with trustees. Secondly, uh, this, uh, the logistics center around WIPAC has been awarded money for phase one and two. Nobody can tell me, and even the economic director doesn't know why we, what's the difference, uh, between what already been given to WIPAC, who has a ten million dollar expansion on the table, and what he's submitting now. So, uh, we don't have, uh, enough supporting documents to make an informed decision. It's a good idea, but how can you vote on something if you don't have documents? So with that, that's my comment.
You, you mentioned it just before, trustee, and I'm trying to figure out what ten million dollar expansion does WIPAC have?
We didn't go to, um, they, they just doing a ten million dollar expansion?
No.
Okay.
No, that was a opening of another building that was already built.
Ten million dollars?
It didn't, I don't know what it costs them, but that's not a ten million dollar expansion at the village. That's not even, that, that building was put up there because WIPAC needed another building. We may get something from that, but that's in the tenth district, so I don't understand what your question is, but, um,
I didn't have to pose a question, I posed a comment.
But you have plenty, you have plenty of time to ask these questions, but today you chose to do that now, do involve. Any other questions? Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
And Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Motion to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the submission of an application, application to Cook County of Cook requesting community development block grant funds for the program for the year two thousand and eighteen for the village of South Village Cook and Will Counties in Illinois. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Todd, second by trustee Grant. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I have a number twelve general comments from the mayor and the Florida trustees. I'll start with trustee Todd.
No comment at this time.
Trustee Brewer?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have the impression that this is a public meeting, and I would like to talk to the public when I make comments about certain subjects. You may not agree with everything I'm saying, but I have reasons to say what I want to say. The application that the economic developer is, um, director is submitting is questionable, because I think WIPAC and logistics center have had, already have been awarded money for phase one and two. I don't understand why we still constantly looking for grants from WIPAC, when you got a whole town full of people you're looking at. Secondly, with the five hundred fifty thousand dollars, you put it in general fund. That's what payroll is paid from, the general fund. There's no way you're gonna tell me some of this money's not gonna be used for payroll. I understand we have an aging report, and it needs to get down, but to keep on putting on borrowing money and not addressing the underlying problem is the issue with me. You need to address the underlying issue, and you can't keep taxing and borrowing money. We, we forty-three billion in the hole, we're not gonna get out of hole borrowing money. We need to cut back somewhere. That's the end of my comment.
Trustee, uh, Tate? Trustee Jones? Trustee, uh, Zupan? Trustee Grant?
No comment.
My comment is, um, thank everyone for coming out to the meeting, trying to keep them, well, they're relatively short, but, um, I thank you very much. If there's anything that anyone is not clear with, I'm here every single day, um, from usually nine to five, and that's a good to me. With that being said, I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved. It was moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Todd. All in favor? Hold it. Motion carried. Thank you very much.